Oh, look, it's the Plaid Brothers over there.
I knew. I looked over at him.
You were just waiting.
But he ain't got the belt buckle.
Thank goodness.
And I swear.
He's got better taste.
That's the John Dutton version.
I know.
I swear it took a plaid shirt off.
All right, John Dutton, relax.
I like that joint.
I had a bright plaid one on earlier. I'm so glad I didn't wear it.
Ooh, it got you. You don't want to look good.
Stand up, Plaid.
Yes.
The Plaid Brothers.
The Plaid Brothers. Glad we have some local coverage of that.
We didn't play.
Having appointed our time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the Committee to Hold to Order on February 28, 2003. Would you please join me for the Pledge and Allegion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman. Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer. Mr. Chair, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I'll accept the motion for approval of the February 14th.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any presentations tonight?
No, sir.
There are none. Next, we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Do we want to take any action or move any of these?
2022-384, 2022-463, 2023-001, 2023-007.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now for ordinances for committee consideration.
CWLP, 2023-051, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in an amount of $40,000 under contract number UE20-11-65, five-year term, for general use maintenance gases with Ilmo products, company for a total amount not to exceed $81,411.95 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second. It probably moved in second for consent. Any discussion? Mr. Redpath.
Could you tell me, is there a benefit? Who has this, Doug or Todd? I guess you're the ranking member. Is there a benefit to the five-year contract? I don't like to do multi-year contracts.
Yeah, I think they thought they'd get a better price over a five-year period is why that originally was set up that way. I can't talk specifics on the contract because I wasn't involved.
Just have Doug give me some information on this if you would, and that'll be fine.
Sure. It was competitively bid, though, so it was, yep.
It's okay.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All right, we're moving for consent. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you have something?
Please recognize me as present for the meeting, Mr. Clerk.
Noted. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
2023-052, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of rebuild kits for existing relays at various substations from GE Grid Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $79,548.63 for the Office of Public Utilities.
For consent.
Second.
Properly moved in second for consent. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-053, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of new relays for various substations with Schweitzer's Engineering Laboratories Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $162,653.64 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 General City Business, 2023-054, an ordinance approving the appointment of Teresa C. Jones to the Springfield Community Relations Commission.
Move for debate. Second.
It's been motion to move this to debate. Is there any discussion? And Teresa's here. Would you say welcome again? I think you spoke last time.
No, she hasn't.
Or she hasn't spoken at all?
I'd like her to come up.
You'd like to come up and say a few words if you'd like.
Good evening, Mayor Langfelder and members of the council. My name is Teresa Jones, and I have lived and worked in Springfield for the past 30-plus years. I have been employed by AARP for the past nine years, and before that I worked for the Illinois State Senate for 13. We all know that representation matters. It's important as a Springfield resident to be able to show up and to work with others that also want to show up and make a difference in their community. The past several years due to the pandemic, it has taken a toll on our city, and many of us haven't been able to be out in the community. Fortunately, we are now beginning to slowly open up and get out a little bit more. We are, in some cases, seeing people that we haven't seen for some, in years, some, just in some time, months. We are getting back to old relationships and creating new ones. These are key steps, my opinion, in building our city's strength. In my current position at AARP, one of my issue areas is livable communities. AARP has and is working diligently on getting in position to have Springfield designated as an age-friendly community. That's a work that started right before the pandemic. Thankfully, our mayor, he had been interested in this from the beginning when we brought it to him. I can help move this further, and I can, and by being appointed to this committee, or this commission, excuse me, it would be an extension and a platform in making things happen and maybe even happen a little quicker. It's a vision. Lastly, I am passionate about being part of the solution to making our city more livable. I'm passionate about bringing residents closer together. I am passionate about understanding and having our committee, our people, understand that even through our differences, we are closer and have more similarities than most think. I'm passionate about our residents, our government, and building trust. And I'm passionate about seeing our city government representatives working together to build better relationships with one another and the community. A strong family, it always starts at the head. We don't and we won't agree on everything, but that's okay. It's what we show and it's what it is about our community sees. It's about representation. It's about relations and relationships. It's about community relations. So I want to be in a position to help with this. So in closing, I thank you. I thank you for your consideration to being appointed to the Community Relations Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is for debate. Any more discussion?
Yep.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. I just want to say, Teresa, I know you've already sat down. That's okay. Very proud to have her as one of my residents in Ward Eight, but I've also known Teresa for years, and you'll make an excellent addition to this commission. So thank you for accepting this volunteer position. Appreciate it very much.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-055, an ordinance amending Chapter 50, Section 50.21 and Chapter 52, Section 52.40 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended relating to the electrical and water liens.
Move for debate.
Second. Second.
It's been properly moved in second to send this to debate. Any discussion?
Is there anybody here from the utility can tell us what this is about, or is this something for Corporation Council?
Yes, just very briefly. This is really trying to set up a formal procedure for dealing with compromising any liens. There's been a lot of discussion about how that should happen. In the 30 seconds on this, state law allows municipalities to put liens for water and sewer. Springfield has taken that a step farther and does not only water sewer, but electric. And so there's a section of the city code that addresses putting liens, you know, liens on property for both water and electric. And this is just adding clarity on what the process should be if there's a compromise needed related to any of those liens. So it's just codifying how it should be handled.
In that case, I'd change my motion to, for consent if.
I think we should have it on debate. I want to look at, talk about something.
Okay, we can leave it there. Thank you.
Alderman McMiniman.
Just to add to what Corporation Council said, the ordinance basically says, or gives authority to the general manager and the city attorney acting collectively to approve settlements up to 20,000, and then the mayor would have approval authority, a settlement authority up to 50,000, and then the city council would have to weigh in at 50,000 and above. But please note, Corporation Council, there's a typo on each of the, in the water section and the electric section. If you look down at the bottom, it says $50 is the approval authority for the council. I think we meant 50,000 and above for city council approval.
So is this just for the implementation of the liens, Alderman?
And then also, it requires, another provision of this requires our utility to file a notice of lien whenever the amount owed gets to 20,000 and above and is three months delinquent. So that makes it a requirement. They can file liens at lesser amounts if it's commercially good practice to do so, or if there's reason to do so. And then the other provision of this is that any settled debt, regardless of amount, has to be filed with our city clerk so it becomes a public record visible to anyone and everyone.
But would there be a collection? Would there be a collection attempt before we go to establish a lien on a piece of property?
That would be at the discretion of the utility, up to $20,000. We don't have to file a notice of lien up to 20,000, but that'd have the discretion to do so, a notice of lien. There's a lien that exists as soon as someone gets behind, but it doesn't become a recorded lien until we file a recording at the county recorder's office.
So this would be an excessive step past the collection. If we tried to make the collection, couldn't make the collection, then we put the lien on?
Correct. If it's like a letter, you know, type of a collection where we have either a third party trying to make collections, or we just do it with letters of our own, this would be a required step to protect our lien against the real estate that the lien would be filed against.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
I would just note that, you know, this ordinance does, it does have two points, GNH, on, you know, 5021, our electric lien process and our water lien process. So it does address both of those. And, you know, I'm happy to see that, you know, in any of these settlements to be filed with our city clerk for public view. I know, you know, transparency is important, so I'm glad to see that language in there. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. A wise alderman who used to sit in Ward Three, the Ward Three seat, told me a long time ago that you need to read everything. And I did read this proposed amendment before. And I just would ask Corporation Council, if you could look at Sections G in both the water and the electric, and in particular, the lines that deal with, it says, and I'll just read one of them. The one on the electric side that says, "Any settlement which reduces the original lien amount in excess of," I know the intent is 50,000, says, "shall be approved by the city council." And I believe, obviously, the intent there is when it's 50,000 or over, it has to come to council. However, the way it reads, it makes it, it sounds like the council has to approve it. And of course, we have that option. So if you could take a look at it with that perspective.
It's intended to be subject to. If that's not clear, we'll clear it out.
And even in the section before that deals with the mayor and the general manager, it kind of reads the same. So anyway, if you just take a look at it, because that's how I read it, and I know that wasn't the intent, but.
Just to, not to dive into this again to everybody's dismay, ordinarily, collections or things are related to contracts. You do a contract with somebody, and they violate the contract, so you seek to enforce the contract. This is another step, as Alderman Redpath was actually leading up to. This actually goes beyond a normal contract enforcement action, like you owe me money, so I'm going to take you to court. This actually acts as a lien on the real estate, and it gives a very powerful tool that private, for example, private utilities don't have. The state law allows specifically for cities to have water and sewer, but this Springfield, because we have the utility, the electric utility, actually has expanded that to incorporate electric. There is no set standard currently, policy if you will, for when the lien gets filed, when the lien gets filed. And so I think right now, I believe we have 12, I think there are maybe 12 or 14 liens of various sizes, mostly very small, that the utility will then, commercial office refers over for, you know, file a lien. So the hope on at least this part was to minimally set a standard. If it gets up to 20,000, it should automatically be filed as extra security. You still have the claim, you still have the claim under the contract. This simply puts the lien actually on the property. And, you know, one of the issues with this is that this leads to the potential of where property, and this has happened, where a property owner has a tenant who owes a utility bill, who may leave or otherwise doesn't pay, and the commercial office then refers this for a lien, and the lien can actually then be filed against the rental property, because that's the point of service where the electric service actually took place. And so the circumstances don't happen that often. As I said, I think we have 12 that have been referred from the commercial office, but the intent of this, I think entirely with Alderman McMiniman and Alderman Gregory, was to give some form so going forward, there won't be any ambiguity about how it should be handled. So that was, I think, the intent, but it's from state law, and it's a step beyond, it's a step beyond just going under a contract claim. Because this is like a mortgage. A lien becomes almost like a mortgage, a claim on the property, although it's, you know, it's behind whatever the existing debt is. It doesn't jump in front of the bank or something like that.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley.
So I was actually going to wait, but since Alderman Donlin brought this up, I had similar concerns around the settlement language. Mr. Circle, since it reads the settlement shall be approved by the mayor, and then in excess of 50,000 shall be approved by city council, I think I'd be more comfortable if, in both of those instances, the language was, you know, must be submitted to for review and approval.
Subject to the approval is what we'll change it to.
Yeah, something that shows that there's review and approval. Instead of, this way, it's kind of, I feel like it ties our hands, and everyone has to approve it. So, yeah, if we could just have those changes in both subsection Gs, that would be great. Thank you.
We'll take care of that and circulate it.
Okay, Alderman Redpath.
One final point, and I know this is a step in a progressive discipline situation, but once we put the lien on the property and the tenant is gone, our rules, I think, that fall on collections, fall on the individual. Does that follow that individual even though we put the lien on the property? I'm kind of confused on that.
Yes.
So.
Whoever the account holder is, if it's an individual, then that can follow that individual if they come to reestablish someplace else.
And so I guess the follow-up to that question is, if the landlord, if the landlord gets stuck with this bill, do we, when we get into situations, we don't always let the landlord know what the rental, what the leasing is doing. I think that's kind of the confusion. Some landlords get caught handcuffed, they thought the bill was being paid, and then all of a sudden, they're not being paid. Am I right on that?
The one thing I would say is, if you recall, there's only, like, I believe, about 12 that have been referred. And in each instance, if it's regarding property, then we serve the property owner. So they would have actual knowledge of the lien.
But to the point where it's already $20,000, or is it through the progressive discipline?
The ones that we have now are less than 20,000, and those are ones where the, for the commercial office has made a determination administratively that because of the difficulty with the collection part, they want to put a lien on. So what ends up happening is we literally will just get a referral from the commercial office to place the lien on a certain property, and then they'll provide a copy of the bill and that sort of thing.
But it still follows the renter?
Correct. Ultimately, if the customer goes to another location in order to establish their account, then they would have to make good on any past due accounts, whether it's a payment plan or otherwise. When that happens, then the lien is released.
Thank you.
If that helps.
The motion is to send it to debate. Any more discussion? Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I apologize for coming the second time. I just forgot to ask my second question. A little derailed there with the answer. But so what is the threshold now?
There isn't a.
There isn't one at all? That what I heard somebody say? I don't know who said it.
That's, if I may speak, I think that's our problem. There hasn't been any, on the history of CWLP, we've never had in the code what the rules are. This puts the situation out there and the accurate procedures that have to be followed.
Okay, motion to move to debate. If there's no more discussion, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-056, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D, E, and F1 local licenses due to failure to renew for 2023.
Motion for consent.
You guys are asleep, okay. It's been motion in second to send this on to consent. Any debate? There are none? All say yes if you agree.
Aye.
2023-057, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution grant number 21-425018 from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in an amount of $150,000 and cash match of $20,000 for funding the Downtown and Mid Illinois Medical District Master Plan for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent. Second.
It's been motion in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion? I just had a question, not a discussion. Is this referring to the master plan we just, okay, thank you. There are no more discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-058, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative Grant in the amount of $190,100 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been motion in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? There are none. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-059, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of the Illinois Housing Development Authority Grant Number APP-51975 from the Illinois Housing Development Authority Home Repair and Accessibility Program, HRAP, in an amount of $650,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for consent. Second.
It's been properly motion to send this on to consent. Any discussion? There are none. All say aye.
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 2023-060, a resolution adopting the Heartland Continuum of Care 2022 through 2028, strategic plan to address the homelessness.
Move for consent. Second.
It's been properly moved to send this to consent. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just, with permission of the sponsors, like to be added as a co-sponsor.
I was the original sponsor who asked for this, so I'd love to have you join.
Well, I also asked for it as well, and, you know, carrying over from a conversation from 2020 with the mayor, and when we originally denied, or my original vote for the Center for Health and Housing, I vowed that I would always continue to help homelessness. I would always go over there. I'd go over there. We do all types of things. So, you know, I get it.
I reviewed the draft that Mr. Circle sent, so I appreciate, I appreciate your support. I think this is a great one for us to get.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-061, an ordinance amending Chapter 36, Section 36.04(c) of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as men pertaining to appointments.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
I, and this will be a question for Mr. Donlin. I respect this ordinance. I think it's a good ordinance. And I just wanted to see if we had any thought, you know, in this ordinance, or if we need to think for new ordinance as far as when employees leave the city for whatever reason, whether it's resign, resignation, termination, et cetera, do we add in cool-off periods to things that involve city contracts and city money? I think at times, we have seen some things get complicated, you know, with some issues like that. And I think that's something that we need to consider. I know there's other forms of government that have those contingencies in there, so.
Yeah, I think the state looks at, is looking at, and has policies similar to that in place. I think it would be independent of this particular topic, but I would love to talk to you about it and see if we can come up with something.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderman McMiniman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it would be maybe a good idea to shorten the time period for acting directors from 12 months to a lesser number of months. But I wouldn't, we have to think about whether that would impair our ability to recruit an acting director. There may be situations where an acting director who comes in might be intimidated by a three-month rejection by the council. Maybe they want to get their boots on the ground for a longer period of time before the council can judge them to, you know, take them off their position. Currently, we have two acting directors. We have economic development acting director, and we have HR acting director. And maybe it'd be hard to recruit someone in an acting position. Let's say we're six months out from an election, and a mayor is trying to recruit some directors. You know, would they want to be on safe ground for a longer period of time than three months? So that's the reservation I have about that. And, you know, Mayor, I don't know if you want to discuss it now, or what your preference is, or next week, but I think it's something we should think about. So for that reason, I'd like to keep this on debate, just to think this through. You know, maybe six months would be a better, or an acceptable time period that someone can be in an acting directorship. Right now, it's one year.
So, Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I should have summarized. I apologize, kind of what the genesis of this is. First of all, if you go to the end, the effective date of this ordinance would not be until May 1, so it'd be after the election. It isn't about who's mayor now, or we don't know who's going to be mayor in the future. It could be Mayor Langfelder or Treasurer Busher. But when this was changed, first of all, before I was elected, I remember the chatter amongst the council about controversy over an acting director being, or an acting individual being in place for a long period of time. And then Alderman Thailand wanted to shorten that, and it's 2016, initiated, sponsored the ordinance. I believe that I supported to make it a year. But the conversations that we had as a, you know, kind of, when he was talking about the number was possibly revisiting this. I've always had a problem with the year. I think it's too long. Remember, the intent, and this is really, it's a policy, it's a policy ordinance, the intent of the consent decree which established how Springfield is set up, which is unique in the city code, it clearly says that the mayor has the authority to appoint certain individuals such as directors of departments, no question. But it also says that, it says shall with advice and consent of the council. And a year is too long, I think at least, and that's why I proposed a shorter time. I was cognizant of the fact and had discussions with Corporation Council about trying to be reasonable with the, because, you know, think about our process. We introduce an ordinance, it goes to committee the next week, then it goes to council the week after. A 60-day period or 30-day period is probably too short, because we need time to vet those individuals and come, you know, we get the resumes and have considerations. And this is a compromised number, and I'd like to go on debate. So thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. So Alderman Donlin, just to clarify, because I'm looking at this, and Thank you. So Alderman Donlin, just to clarify, because I'm looking at this and I wasn't sure based on the language, if there is a you get 90 days and then something has to happen? Or is it 90 days, it could be renewed for another 90 days? I wasn't very clear.
That's the let's just look at the existing code. The existing code says you could only be an acting director up to up to one year. This would change that to 90 days.
So you could not be reappointed for an additional 90 days?
That's the intent.
Okay, I just want to be sure. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman DeSensel.
Thank you, Chair. As someone who has served in an appointed position for 17 years, you live by the sword, you die by the sword. Those are the that's what you that's the risk you take in accepting a position such as a directorship. Is it fair? You know the risk going in. So, you know, there was a change in administration back in 2015. I was fired. I expected it. I knew it was going to happen. I think that we're in the this is kind of where we are. Twelve months, I agree, is too long. So whether we extend it to six months or leave it at 90 days, I think something needs to change.
Any more discussion? Motion is to move the debate. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Any unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Alderman, I'm sorry, did you go first?
I pushed the button.
Beat him to it.
Yeah, Alderman purchased.
Thank you, Chair. I see that we have some papers here on our desk and I wanted to allow Horace Mann to come up and speak to what we have in front of us because today I was just made aware of something that would be coming forward from Alderman Conley, but I hadn't heard anything from her. So I do want to allow them to come up and address what's going on. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you again. I I don't know what you had in front of you, so I.
That new map that was presented.
Would somebody give him a copy of what we have?
Here, you can have it.
There's no map.
Or buildings, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Who did we receive these documents from and the photos of the buildings?
They were passed out by staff, I thought.
Yes.
Steve Myers.
Mr. Steve Myers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, so thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to review that. It's actually part of why we were here this evening. You know, and it's kind of weird to start out a conversation this way, but I want to start out by apologizing. Last week, I stood up here and I stated that the buildings at six eighteen and six twenty-two East Washington weren't in a historic district. And I in in making that statement, I relied on a map that was on the National Park Service's website, the National Park Service oversees, the National Register of Historic Places. As I mentioned last week, we received a letter at about at about 11:00 AM and between 11:00 and 5:30. I thought the fastest way to figure out whether or not it was in a historic district was to go to the website maintained by the National Register of Historic Places. The map was incorrect. And as a result, what I said that it was not in a historic district was inaccurate. To be clear, both six eighteen and six twenty-two East Washington are within a historic district thanks to a boundary expansion that took place that was approved by the National Park Service in 2017, I believe. The documentation supporting that expansion also identifies six eighteen East Washington Street as being a contributing structure to the historic district. Six twenty-two is not. So again, on behalf of me, my law firm, my client, Horace Mann, I'm sorry. We understand that you have a very difficult job and so we work incredibly hard to give you accurate information. And sometimes the information that we get and that we pass along is wrong. That's what happened here. There's no excuses, no shifting the blame, no nothing. We're sorry. We screwed up. I hope that each one of you knows that it was an honest mistake and that no one was intending to mislead you. Period. Horace Mann holds itself and its attorneys to incredibly high ethical standards and we would not do that. That said, the end result. What I said to you last week, the end result, that it is permissible to use TIF funds to complete this project, doesn't change. You'll remember that last week I gave you three reasons why it wouldn't violate the TIF Act to use TIF funds to complete this project. The first two focused on the historic district boundaries and the contributing structure designation. The third one focused on the language of the TIF Act itself, Section three Q, which says that no cost shall be a redevelopment project cost in a redevelopment project area if used to demolish, remove, or substantially modify a historic resource unless no prudent and feasible alternative exists. Now, I know there's been a lot of conversation in the community about this issue specifically, but one thing has not changed in the intervening week. No prudent, feasible alternative exists. I mentioned last week that the last major rehabilitation of either one of these buildings took place in the late 1980s. Here's a fact I found out in the past week. The last time that utilities were on at one of these buildings was in 2006. Now, so for some perspective, the iPhone was first released in 2007. So for as long as iPhones have existed, one of these buildings has not had utilities. That's how long this building has been vacant and been left to dilapidate and deteriorate. With respect to six eighteen specifically, despite having two different owners that had very ambitious plans about what to do with this building, it deteriorated and it continued to deteriorate. The last time it changed hands was in June of 2018. On June 29th, 2018, six eighteen East Washington sold for $15,000. That's what the marketplace thought that building was worth back then. Now, I want you to think back two weeks now to Mr. Curly's presentation about this building. The roof's collapsed. The hole's getting bigger. The black mold's still there. The asbestos is still there. The standing water's still there. Think about how much it's rained in the last week. I guarantee you a big chunk of that's in the basement of that building right now. So there's no prudent, feasible alternative. Let's look at what the actual alternatives are. There's two options fundamentally. Option one is Horace Mann's proposal. The site would be owned in that scenario by a longtime downtown business that is an integral part of the community and it's being incorporated into part of a significant revitalization of that block. Of those three total buildings, the total project cost is about $4 million. We're asking for $600,000. That's about 15% of the project cost. It's a great deal. Option two is that the buildings continue to sit. The redevelopment of those sites fall apart. And after 10 to 20 years, because that's, you know, roughly the boundary that we're in between right now, we've got continued vacancy, continued deterioration. The hole will get bigger. The mold will spread. The asbestos will still be there waiting for you. We pass up an opportunity by taking that by taking that option, by picking that option. We pass up an opportunity to have this blight on downtown removed and the overwhelming cost of it paid by a private entity. You know which one of those two is the prudent choice. Last week, you made the prudent choice. It was the only practicable choice to make. Now, I mentioned that there'd been quite a bit of community conversation about this and so I want to address a couple criticisms specifically of this proposal. The first is that TIF funds would be better utilized to stabilize this building. And in that that's not a plan. That's my response. That's not a plan. That's not an alternative. There are no estimates as to what that would cost. And as I mentioned, one of these buildings has been vacant since 2006. That's how long we've had for a plan to develop and there isn't one. It's also not feasible. Under the city's current regulations, we cap TIF benefits at one-third of the total project cost. With the amount that you're going to have to invest in a building like this, the private investment required is going to be too high for the building to ever make sense financially. It's also not prudent. Let's say we spend all the money and we stabilize the building. There's no identified end user, at least I haven't heard of one. That means that building, once it's stabilized, is just going to continue to sit there. It also will drain millions of dollars from a TIF that is set to expire soon and still has other worthy projects to consider. So that's my response to criticism number one. Criticism number two is that, at least that I've heard, is city funds shouldn't be used to tear down a contributing structure to a historic district. Here's my response to that. Since 2016, this city council has voted unanimously to do that three times. The first occurred in December 6th of 2016, when the city council voted unanimously to overturn the Historic Site Commission's denial of a demolition permit on the YWCA building. The YWCA building was listed that year in Landmarks Illinois's annual list of the most endangered historic places in Illinois. Local critics at the time panned the demolition, and this is a quote, "as shortsighted and premature." When the city made its presentation to the Historic Sites Commission about why this building was going to be demolished, they this city explicitly relied on the factors that we're relying on now. There were no economically viable proposals to rehabilitate the building. There had been no offers to buy the building in the six years leading up to the city's ownership of it. And the one request, the one proposal for this building asked for somewhere between seven and nine million dollars to rehabilitate the building. The city determined that that was not financially or economically feasible. And so it was torn down. But let me ask you this. What's there right now? The Levittown Concert Series takes place every week during the summer on that block. That block is packed every week, all summer. It is also an unparalleled site for something to be built in the future. Something can be added, infill development, a park. We have an opportunity there for significant development when we find the right fit. If you had listened to the to the critics that called it shortsighted and premature back in 2016, you wouldn't have either of those. On February 1st of 2022, this city council unanimously approved spending almost three-quarters of a million dollars to tear down two contributing structures. The press coverage of the votes explained why. This is a quote, "The buildings are in terrible shape. They're a hazard. They're beyond repair. And it wasn't cost-effective to rebuild them, given the amount of deterioration and the amount of stuff we would have to remove and rebuild." Does anybody know what buildings I'm talking about? The parking garage at Fourth and Washington and the Club Station House building right next to it. Both are listed as contributing structures in the 2015 expansion.
A fire at Club Station House.
You're right. The building had deteriorated.
It's not exactly the same situation.
Then let's compare it to the YWCA.
This isn't even on the agenda for this evening. I mean, you're taking up this much time on something we've already voted on.
Let's let them finish and stay in order. I realize you feel that way, Alderman, but we're in it now. So I but if you could.
Alderman, I will wrap up. Thank you.
Please.
The unfortunate fact is this building cannot be prudently or feasibly saved. We appreciate your vote last week to authorize the redevelopment agreement and we look forward to building something special for you. Thank you.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you. Tony, if you want to stay, please do. Unfortunately, what you ended on right there is is almost the crux of my concerns. We've talked since last week. I was a reluctant yes on that to begin with.
Understand.
And and as I explained to you, and again, I should probably be clear, I cast no stones. You know, you explained how the the map confusion came about. I will say just procedurally, it concerns me that that the city didn't also do an independent review and catch that. I feel like that's why we have a city offices and city staff. We should be reviewing things to make sure that an outsider, you know, an independent observer is reviewing submissions for something like a TIF, a TIF proposal. That's I have I have some grave concerns about that that topic. That said, this would have been much easier. If I had known that this is a contributing structure, especially six eighteen, I would have been an easy no last week. You would have had your your votes and this would have gone on. You know, enough said. You make a compelling case with the state of the building. I understand that. I will say I know the building and and it is structurally outside. There are some very unique features to it. And 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 when you end with, you're kind of you're going to put something great there, it's a parking lot. I I have, I mean, it was it was difficult last week to vote for a parking lot. I cannot in good conscience agree with you on that on that aspect of this project. I mean, you're taking down a building to put in a parking lot. And and it's that said, Horace Mann certainly has the right to do whatever they want to with buildings that they own, as long as they go through the correct procedures and steps. And that case may be very compelling before the Historic Commission. But when you're going to do something like that with TIF dollars, as you point out, it's just 15% of the project cost, I would suggest that that might be a project cost that Horace Mann should then take on. And that shouldn't be something that from our limited downtown TIF dollars that we should be putting those monies into a surface lot as opposed to, as you point out, possibly investing those giving those having those funds ready for someone who wants to come in and do a meaningful renovation of of another historic building. So, you know, I'm I'm I guess this is my turn to speak on unfinished business. I did reach out to Corporation Council and what I want to do with my time on unfinished visit is is ask that as one of the prevailing votes on on last week's consideration of this ordinance, and I'll get the right number in just a second, that we that we do reconsider this at next week's meeting. I understand I don't need a second for that, Mr. Zorkel.
The just very briefly.
Oh, I do need a second. So I would make a motion that we reconsider this.
This is not proper. It has to be at the city council meeting. And what I was going to mention is since you've indicated your request, what we will do is make sure it's listed on the agenda as an agenda item. You would then make your motion with a second. It would be discussed. If the motion to reconsider passes, it brings the ordinance back for debate and then basically a new vote.
Okay, and that would be ordinance, Agenda Item 2023 zero four zero.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Tony, and I appreciate it. I do. We had we had a long talk. You you make a very compelling and convincing case for a number of for a number of reasons. Again, my my concern is is using TIF dollars towards a parking lot in place of a historic building and and removing those funds from a TIF that is, again, as you so rightfully pointed out, sunsets.
Can I add one clarifying comment to what I said?
I would like to see someone stop you. Please do.
My reference to the word build was was referring to the project as a whole, which includes the revitalization of the building on the corner.
And I appreciate that.
I just wanted to clarify that.
So are you saying that you would not, Horace Mann, would not go forward with the remainder of the project if these TIF dollars weren't included?
No, that that's that's not what I'm saying. The in referring to the overall project, you know, Horace Mann has already made a a significant investment in the the corner building, the woodwork building. You know, I as far as what specific plans would be, you know, I I'm not going to sit up here and speculate. I I don't know.
And that's fine. We don't need to. I again, I I absolutely under. We talked, I I believe that there was absolutely no ill intent on anyone's part with this with this ordinance. And and I do wish that we had had, you know, different information last week. We didn't. This is this is where we are. This is where we are. And I've said it before, I have to look myself in the mirror in good conscience. That was a reluctant yes. But thank you very much for coming tonight and for yet again making a very compelling case for your position. I appreciate that.
Alderman Gregory. Thank you, Chair. Tony, I know you guys are just trying to do the best you can for this project. You know, while it is a parking lot, I looked at the design and I think it has value to our downtown. You know, if the owner of the building had a plan, you know, to fix it up, you know, then it may be different, you know, under these circumstances, you know. And, you know, as a downtown alderman, I, in every event, try to tend and go with what that alderman of that ward wants. So, you know, I would be interested in hearing from the alderman of the ward and what she wants to do and push forward, and I'd definitely look to support that. But I will say, you know, I hear a lot of talk about, you know, how do we miss, you know, this map? But, you know, the Historic Sites Commission has had members on it for quite some time, and this has been all out in the newspaper and things of that nature. So some, you know, that information was failed to give to us in due time, you know. Whether or not that makes, you know, that doesn't really change, you know, my thinking on it, unless somebody had a plan to get it back in shape. Then, so I'll yield my time. Thank you. Okay. So, do you want to go now? Yeah, so I just want to say to the other alderman, she wasn't finished and I went on, and I'm sorry about that. So, go ahead and finish.
So I had one to follow up after you were done, Tony, to ask, has there been any inspections on this building? Because that hole didn't just happen overnight. Those floors didn't just collapse overnight. So how long had this building been sitting in disrepair like that?
So, Alderwoman, I can't speak to city inspection process.
Is Director Bottom here or Director Harris? Do you know if anybody had went into that building at all? Have we had any complaints on it? Or this is just some unforeseen things that we're just finding out since Horace Mann came forward to purchase the building?
Well, typically, in a building like that, where they're so adjacent to one another, normally we receive some type of complaint from the building. A lot of times, too, those inspections also can be asked from the actual owners of the building. Have we received a request from the owners of those particular buildings in the past years since I've been here? The answer is no.
And so, out of all of that time, oh, no, I'm fine with you, Director Harris. Out of all of that time, too, I just find it very odd that people are strongly against this when it has been demonstrated and pointed out that we have floors that have caved in and they're sitting on the first floor. So what happens when something sits for over and over and over again? I think if anyone's familiar with the Miami situation, you know how it collapsed and it all fell down? What do we do then at that time? Because I don't hear any solutions coming forward to fixing the repairs to leave the building as is. And I'm in real estate, and I won the Historic Preservation Award in 2015. I like working on historic properties and historic homes. So I understand the nature of this, and I would have never wanted to move forward if the building was in repair where it could be saved. And I would love to hear from the organizations who have came forward to talk about how this building still needs to stand and is very unsafe. If that building collapsed and we have cars driving past, anything, debris falls out, then what do we do? Wouldn't that be a liability? I just want to ask just for clarification, even if I understand, just for everyone to know. Corporation Council.
The, if a collapse occurs, that's a private building, ordinarily, that's not a public liability. It would be a clear liability for the property owner. And those are circumstances where, if the department determines that a building is, represents an immediate danger, then the, and ordinarily, that's something where it's open and obvious, like the facade's falling off or something of that nature, then the city will give notice or can actually take emergency action without giving notice. So there's two or three different options there. But if private property collapses, it's going to be the primary responsibility of the property owner. It's not publicly owned, therefore, it would be the obligation of the property owner.
Thank you for that clarification, and that brings me to the point of, so, no one knew that these floors were sitting in the first floor. No one knew that this hole was in this roof all this time. And he said the building has been vacant since 2006 with no utilities on. I think that I'll be bringing something forward because that's kind of unsettling to me that we have a property sitting downtown that's supposed to be a big historic building, and nobody knows what's going on with it and it's been sitting vacant that long. Thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman, just a second.
Thank you, Chair. First, I just want to clarify a few points. In 2016, five of us were not sitting up here, including myself. So I didn't take a vote on the YWCA. Second, the concerns that I brought up last week, I brought up to Horace Mann with Alderwoman Conley when we had lunch together. Did I bring them all up, Alderwoman Conley?
Yeah.
So everything I have said about this project was brought up, was a 106 review done, you know, have you talked to the chapeau? What has been done to make sure this is okay? This hasn't even gone in front of our own Historic Sites Commission. One of my constituents, Bob Emel, he came to us a few weeks ago and complained that there wasn't consistent meetings of the Historic Sites Commission. So the demolition permits haven't even been issued for this. So for me, this is, you know, and again, it's a parking lot. We don't need any surface, any more surface parking lots. I guess there were just so many processes that were not followed in this TIF agreement that it's troubling to me, that it was just kind of pushed through because it was a reputable company and we're going to trust everything that was being said. And I don't mean this in a disparaging way. I just mean that that's exactly what happened. And then a couple days later, it came out, oh, no, it wasn't the right map. It's my understanding the correct map is on the DSI website.
I believe that's correct.
Aren't you heavily involved with DSI?
I am.
Okay. So, anyway, you know, it's just, it's very troubling to me that this was not vetted more properly, both by the city, by the Historic Sites Commission, that's their job, and by Horace Mann. And that's, if this comes back for a vote, my vote's not going to change. And I don't know that, you know, any other votes will change. That's just how I feel about it, and I've said my piece. So, thank you.
Can I respond to just one point?
Sure.
The demolition, a demolition permit does not necessarily have to precede the redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement can occur prior...
No, but it's supposed to go before the Historic Sites Commission.
Right. The demolition of the building itself, yes.
Yes, and that hasn't happened.
It has not happened.
Correct. And in fact, from what I heard yesterday, a meeting was scheduled for March 13th, and it was asked to be moved up to March 6th to accommodate this request.
Okay.
For a commission that hasn't consistently been meeting. So that's another, again, we're changing processes, we're not following our current own process. It's just troubling all the way around for me. But thank you.
Understood.
Thank you. Alderman McManaman.
When we talk about, you know, not having the relevant information before us by which to judge this decision, it's one of these situations where everyone's to blame, but no one in particular is to blame. The re-boundary of the historic district, that comes from state government and went to the federal government, Department of Interior. So it never passed through the city council. You know, this city council never weighed in on the re-boundary of the historic district. I think there may be some, the private sector out there, I think, is aware of what's going on with our boundary. And I wish Horace Mann had reached out more to the private sector and become more familiar with what was going on. And, you know, the advantages of having a building, a contributing building being in a historic tax district, one of the huge advantages to that is that when you rehab the building, you become qualified for historic federal history, historic tax credits. Steve Myers, who's sitting here tonight, is real familiar with that. And the current rate now is 20%. So the blessing in disguise here, that 20% of the cost you put in to the building to rehab with the criteria that's set forth by the Department of Interior. So one of the blessings in disguise here is that, for example, the headquarters building of Horace Mann, the five-story one or six stories, you know, it was the same architect that did the Twin Towers did that building. So, you know, we, as a city, we can encourage that there be another remap of the historic district to include that Horace Mann headquarters building, so that from now on, when they want to rehab their building, they get a 20% cost share from the federal government. That's huge. So that's one of the blessings in disguise here. And, for example, the corner building that you put $2 million into, 20%. Now, not all those costs would have been eligible, but let's see if they were, that's $400,000.
Right.
That is a gift from the federal government to restore historic structures. So that leads to another comment.
Alderman, I apologize for interrupting. Can I respond to one thing?
You can talk when I'm done.
Okay.
And so, for example, when we consider what's a feasible alternative to demolition, feasibility now has to take into consideration that someone can get 20% cost cut by getting the federal income tax credit. So the financial calculus of what you do with these older buildings can change. And, but I just want to also add another example of good people in Springfield doing good things with buildings in the historic district. The, where the Chamber of Commerce is now, can you picture that? It's at the corner of Fourth and Capitol. It used to be Methodist Church. One of the reasons, and I got this from Mr. Steve Myers, one of the reasons they drew the re-boundaryed the district was to include that church, so that then the Chamber of Commerce and those that rehabbed that church could get the 20% federal income tax credits. So there was information out there, but somehow it didn't get to Horace Mann and it didn't get to everyone it should have gotten to. So I, thank you, Alderwoman Conley, for making, taking a request for reconsideration. I think others on this council were planning to do the same thing, and I think we can have a good discussion about this next week. But bear in mind, we've got two parallel decisions to make. One is, do we put $600,000 into the parking lot? And the other parallel decision is, do we approve the demolition permits? Those are two separate decisions, and they don't have to be, go the same way necessarily. So I don't know if you have something to say.
I do, Alderman. Thank you. And I do apologize for interrupting you. So to your point about the tax credits, you're right. Historic renovation tax credits are a vital tool for revitalizing old buildings. It's, there's no disputing that. One of the issues that you run into is for smaller developers, the type of people who are really investing their livelihoods in revitalizing some of these buildings. They don't necessarily have the income in order to take full advantage of the historic tax credit. And so as a lot, as a part of a lot of these developments, what you'll see is that those tax credits are securitized and sold. One of the problems that you run into in that scenario is, if it's a developer who's not sophisticated enough or not large enough, they either don't know how to do it, can't find somebody to help them, or don't have the, frankly, don't have the resources to pay for the professionals that help them do that. And so you're right, it is an incredibly vital tool, but it, its applicability is hindered in a lot of scenarios that affect its overall, its overall value.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, I thank you for coming, and it looks like we're going to be revisiting this next weekend, so we'll have a week's worth of fun, you know?
I promise to take less time next week.
And this is the, you know, the public discussions about this, but what I will say is, you know, I'm one of the newer ones on the council, and I'm learning tonight, I'm listening. And the thing I want to ask the commission is that, okay, you know, anything valuable we should save and we should try to take care of, but really, what's been going on all this time? You know, we also have to, I don't know if the council has a role in this or where the role is, but things should be happening to these valuable buildings. They shouldn't be just sitting until they get to this point, and the only time we hear from our commission is when somebody's trying to do something. I mean, I don't know if it's they don't have a budget, if they, you know, I just don't have a calendar or track these things or what, but it seems like this is a reaction? And now we hear about it versus 2006 and no lights on and no, you know, all this other stuff I'm hearing. I think that commission should be a little more active in making sure historic sites are used, and then maybe you would have never got the idea on your head to even want to do something like this anyway. So I appreciate you coming, and we'll see what happens next week, sir.
Thank you very much. I promise to take less time next week.
All right, I appreciate it. Is there any more?
Yes, I want to, I want to just touch on a point that you said.
Sure.
As I said, a constituent who serves on Historic Sites Commission, Bob Emel, came up here a few weeks ago.
Yes.
And voiced his frustration about the lack of meetings of the Historic Sites Commission. He talked about how they'd been canceled, how they'd been rearranged, how they'd been, we all heard it, we were here. So we can't put this on the Historic Sites Commission if they're not even meeting on a regular basis.
Thank you, Alderman. Any more unfinished business?
Thank you all very much.
Any new business? No new business? Citizens to address the council, Mr. Clark?
Yes, Mr. Steve Myers. That's got to leave a mark. Mr. Chairman, Mayor Langfelter, other city officials, and alderwomen and aldermen. Thanks for letting me come tonight. I apologize greatly. I had two other events last week and probably could have helped out. I'm here tonight to help out. The subject of the 600 block of East Washington is about history. It's also about the 700 block of East Washington. Our community has been blessed by having Horace Mann as one of our corporate leaders since 1945. The two men that dreamed the dream to make a world-class national corporation to help people in the educational industry is without compare, right? Their decisions in that arena included, as was pointed out, the hiring of a world-class architect to design and construct one of our most treasured architectural elements in our city. You have before you a, an article from the State Journal Register from 1944. They are to be applauded for the work that they've done on the Whitmer Shuck Building. This is precisely what all of us that have been involved with downtown adaptive reuse have been talking about for years. You get a new office on the first floor, or retail, right? Whichever works. Well, you're selling policies, right? That's retail. And you're going to convert the upper stories to wonderful residential opportunities for our community. They're going to be using them a little bit in-house, but it's residential. So kudos to the team, right? That building, the picture, as you can see, was retail. It was a furniture store back in 1944. If you'd be so kind as to look at the next photograph, it's a little better, sorry, it's a little better photograph, you'll see the building at 622 and 624 and 626. It's called G and E Furniture Building, right? The G stands for Gingold. There's probably a few older folks in the room that remember Bill Gingold or Ethel Gingold. Ethel was very instrumental in the NAACP, and she was our first citizen in 2003. Gingold family had a lot of history in that 600 block. Bill Gingold's grandfather had a pawn shop over there where the brew house is in the late 1800s. late 1800s. His father opened G and E Furniture in 1929, that was the year of the crash, right? Bill Gingold grew up, went to the University of Illinois, and he graduated. And he had a dream to be in business, too. Coincidentally, in 1945, the same year that the two gentlemen decided to start Horace Mann, that's all part of history. Mr. Gingold also had other history in our community. It's very important. If you're familiar with Isles Park Place, where the Department of Human Services is, that was his development, him alone developed that. Additionally, Jefferson West, where the Illinois Department of Public Health is, Bill Gingold developed that, too, by himself. He had some friends, but he did that one, too. Where Chase Bank is, at 531 East Washington, he did that building, too. So he had a lot of impact. If you look at the letter from the Lakota Group, that's in the bottom of your packet, on the front page, it talks about eligibility to be added as a contributing structure within a historic district. Here's some of the things you gotta have, including the life of a person significant in our past. Now, Bill Gingold did a lot for this community, and his wife, his first wife was Ethel, she did a lot, too. The reason I'm giving you this picture is, that could be something again. And I know that we've heard tonight that 618 has a problem, and that 622 has a problem. But when these properties were added to the historic district, the most important thing is this, the Whitmer Shuck Building was added, too. And that's allowed Horace Mann to take advantage of that 20% historic tax credit. All they had to do was apply. The reason we did it in 2015 was because, and I was on the Historic Sites Commission, fortunately replaced by alderwoman Lakeisha Purchase, she had more experience. By the way, the mayor will tell you, I got off to let her on, and here's why. She's, she has rehabilitated multiple historic Victorian homes. I never did that. So I got out of the chair, and we got a person on the Historic Site Commission that did that. That was something we needed. Get people on the commission that bring things to the table, okay? Because we added 77 buildings in that application, it allowed for, the one that made it happen was so that we could have 25 apartments in the annex building at First United Methodist Church. It's called the Center at 501, 25 units. By the way, four of those are workforce housing units. We'll have a conversation about that later, right? But that was a key part. Guess what one of the seven layers of financing were? 20% national historic tax credits. That's the number that allows buildings that heretofore, well, who's going to do this? Somebody will step up. And I remember vividly the person that ran the Mississippi Main Street program for many years, Beverly Meng, M-E-N-G was her name. And I'd always go to every national conference and say, Beverly, we got all these buildings, and nobody's doing anything with them. And you know what she told me? Told me this, Stephen, if all you do is beat your head against that brick wall, all you'll get is a bloody forehead. Okay, but how do we get them fixed up? How do we get them reactive? How do we get them adaptively reused? Horace Mann did that on the corner in the 1865 Whitmer Shuck Building, and congratulations to them, they've shown us the way. The reason we added them, so that now the next people that pick up the ball to run with it have that as a tool, that we heard not everybody can use that. Well, I don't know of anybody that hasn't. Is it difficult? You find a purchaser, that's your equity to top off the financing. We will find somebody to be their neighbor. I'm confident. I would submit that these buildings should be, and you'll read that letter from the gentleman that did the original application of what it takes to go from non-contributing, and again, remember the, the black spandrel glass front of that? Next time you go see Jefferson West, where Public Health is, it's the same facade. And Bill Gingold, when you think of Isles Park Place or Jefferson West, he was pretty modern, right? He did some mod things during the urban renewal. He wanted to be progressive. He wanted to do things for his hometown, right? Just like the two gentlemen that started Horace Mann, and Stephen Barthoff and his team that went to New York, that saw those models in Yamazaki's lobby when they went to meet with him, to hire him to build that incredible world-class building. People don't know that. You all know it, because we talk about it. We down here. You really? And I, and I tell people, when you drive by, look at the windows, not the top floor or the bottom floor. Those window spacings are exactly the same as the Twin Towers. That's what lives on, and they are to be commended for that. However, we need others to step up, to be a complimentary use for the dollars they invested next door, that we can then put those buildings back in use, back in production, and good neighbors for somebody that spent that kind of money, right? And that's all good. We got a great brewery right across the street from it, right? What else could we have? By the way, the Trudeau family owns 618, and I tried to talk Mr. Trudeau into putting Rolling Meadows across the street from Anvil and Forge, because you could go back and forth, right? You have breweries.
Point of order, point of order.
You're, you're approaching five minutes over, so wrap it up, please.
One, one final story about history. In order to qualify, you have to honor a person. It says, "The life of a person significant to our past." Again, 1945 was a big year. Our friends at Horace Mann became one of our corporate citizens at that point. Bill Gingold came home and took over his father's furniture store, G and E Furniture, and he, he did that till 1961, when he became a real estate developer. The difference between everyone else and Bill Gingold is this. On February the 10th of 1944, Bill climbed aboard a B-17 bomber in England, and the name on the front of that plane was Sactime Charlie. And he and 159 other planes took off for Bronch Pike, Germany. And over the initial point, which is the point at which Bill, as the pilot of that aircraft, handed the, the keys to the craft off to the bombardier, he, his plane was attacked by three Fox Wolf 190 fighters. They killed his navigator in the nose, they killed his tail gunner, and they killed the ball turret gunner. They set two of his engines on fire, and he got that plane on the ground in Deverne, Germany. Seven of them made it to the ground alive, and he spent 15 months in Luftwaffe 7, which is now part of Poland. And when he came home, he said, "I'm going to make my hometown better." And those are the things that he did, and that's why this building needs to be adaptively reused and not made into anything else but that. And I thank you for your time, and I'm available at any time anybody wants to talk.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Good afternoon.
Good evening, rather.
My name is Hewitt Douglas. I live at 520 South Second Street, next door to the AFL-CIO building, for those that don't know, right across from the Secretary of State's building, right there. Nice place, really nice. Best damn place, excuse my French, best place to live in town, used to be. I'm here to talk about that building. I've talked to, I think I spoke to the mayor about it, but probably not. I know I spoke to Sister Purchase, and she has done a yeoman's job of being able to address some of the issues. See, we've been lied to in that building, the residents. We've been told we couldn't have a residence council, because they don't want to hear what we got to say. You're talking about disrespect. That's the reason I'm here tonight. When you brought up disrespect, that's all I thought about. Disrespect, it don't make sense. The money they got to manage that building, I don't know how much it is, but I can tell you that if you calculate 160 apartments with one to three to four people in each one, it's a community in itself. This is an opportunity for me to tell you that we're not going to stand still and not say something anymore. The residents of that building deserve respect. Owners ain't giving it to us. We hoping we can get some from you. We've gotten some, and we want more. I used to ride with a guy who always told me, "You ain't giving me enough." That's what I'm saying. You ain't giving me enough. Realistically, counsel, I know, and I've been through, oh, the situation of contacting the Housing Board here in Springfield, they told me, "Nothing we can do about," elevator, that when I moved in, I had three elevators running. Now there's one elevator for the last two and a half years. I've had to walk 16 floors twice, walk down four times. I'm tired of this. And now today, yesterday, I hope I got 16 minutes like he got, okay? I'm not Maurice, but I know that y'all set this time limit up for a guy called Maurice. Those don't know Maurice, look it up. Unsafe and dangerous structure. Occupancy of this structure is prohibited. This is fire marshal today. Yesterday, the owners of this building, without notice, put up concrete blocks on Second Street where you come in and out, the parking lot. Told everybody in the front building, you had to move your cars. Told everybody in the back building, where I live in the 16-story building, you got to move your cars from the basement, because when that building was first built in 1960-something, it was designed to be a beautiful place with a big veranda area in the front, where the residents could relax and enjoy themselves. The politics of Springfield allow somebody to buy that property and then put a damn 100-ton building on top of a garage that was built of trees. It's ridiculous. I'm coming to y'all begging, they, they want some tiff money. I ain't got no attorneys like that. They probably make $160,000 a year each. So y'all about to give him some money. Y'all need to give my owners of the building some money. Y'all need to give me some money. I can run that building pretty good, but you don't run that building. And owners don't want to talk to me. I don't know if because I'm big, or because I'm black, or because I'm loud, but they don't want to talk to me. And I want y'all to know that Lakeisha has been working with the owner, she won't tell me their name and address, she's scared I'll do something. But I wouldn't do nothing except to stand out front in protests, and I guarantee the owners of this building, if you fix this building without union labor, Hewitt Douglas and 15 to 20 others will march 24 hours in front of that building. I'm the president of the Coalition Black Trade Unionists. Thank you for listening to me. God bless you. You got any questions for me? I still got about eight minutes.
I just have one comment. I know that Chief Blau and Chief Canning is here, and that this has been going on for an extremely long time. I get calls day in, day out, Mr. Douglas, Masor Davida, they text me constantly. There's only so much that I can do. I, I am the voice for them. I turn in the complaints that they have, but something has to be done, and it took this long. It's been water dripping on these people's cars for years, where they have to spend extra money to get their car repainted.
Yeah, because you can't clean it. Once that rust get on your car, you can't clean it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Then we have, then we have concrete chipping and falling.
Oh, the whole block fell out, remember?
So how we just talked about, Mr. Douglas, how we just talked about a structure that's caving in, that's my biggest concern about, we got a parking garage that I feel like sometimes I'm nervous for them to be parking down there, people to be down there. So Chief Canning has been very responsive, but I'm like Alderman Williams, I am still new up here and understanding how the process works, and I know that we cannot tell an owner how to run their facility, but we have to step in and try to do something to help the residents out. You have, is it Ms. Mimi? She like 90 or 95? She 95 years old and said with me, "This lady is walking 14 to 16 flights of stairs when that elevator is down." I almost cried. I have a grandparent. I would be pissed off.
She's been there 40 years.
And we, we, we need to step in. So yes, they condemn the building, and yes, the residents...
The parking lot, they condemn the parking lot.
I'm sorry, the parking lot. Mr. Douglas.
And they gave you a crazy idea that they're going to move parking over to Horace Mann's parking lot. You know how far away that is from where I am? And I'm supposed to be a shuttle back and forth.
Mr. Douglas, I was getting to that next. And so that, if you all see where Lincoln Towers is on Second Street, and they're telling how many residents in the building to go park their cars in Horace Mann parking lot, catch a shuttle to go back over, we, we have to talk about how these processes are in place, how long we are giving them. A fine, maybe people will get moving when they get a hefty fine, $50,000, $100,000. I don't know if Chief Canning wants to come up and just briefly, because Chief Canning and Chief Blau, you are the only people that have constantly been going over to that building when we do call, and when we do send an email.
Doing a job.
Mr. Douglas.
An unfortunate job.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you, too.
Yeah, so today we were over there with the Building and Zoning Inspectors, as well as Fire Inspectors, and we did a cursory tour of the entire building from the roof all the way to the basement, which is where the parking garage is. We have been in contact with the management, not the owners, and you're well aware that the elevators have been down, and every time the elevator is down, as soon as we know, we have our inspector over there, and the company is on speed dial that comes out and fixes it as soon as possible. Unfortunately, the other two elevators, we are told they are still waiting on parts for. Whether or not that is the truth, I do not know. That's what the management tells us, but we have talked to the different operators of the elevator repair companies, and they, they are waiting on parts. That is a nationwide thing. As far as the parking garage, that, we were alerted to in November, I believe. There was a two-by-two-by-eight-foot-long concrete piece that fell, very sizable. At that time, we had them rope off that area and asked for a structural engineer report. We have not received that to date. However, we do know that the structural engineer has been there and has been in contact with Building and Zoning. We did shut down the parking ramp because on Friday, another piece, much smaller, but still, another piece of concrete fell from the ceiling, and so we feel that it is a safety issue, feel strongly that it is a safety issue. And so we are giving them, people that are there, time to get out. It is the owner's responsibility to provide parking for them. I can't help that they chose to, you know, that that was where they found to put parking. But that, that is the case, that I heard they are going to shuttle them from Horace Mann, from the building. I'm yet, yet, we're yet to see how that's going to work, because I don't believe that's gone into effect as of yet. The parking blocks that you said are there, are, were brought in by the ownership.
I don't know which building.
Maybe Director Harris can possibly speak, but I know at, at one point, we talked about Public Works bringing... bringing in concrete barriers if those yellow barriers don't work.
Yeah, they keep moving them. So all weekend, we're shut down and people are sending me photos, people are calling me and saying, and we can't do anything about it.
Yeah. So I think you brought me up to talk about maybe where the, we go from here. Right now, we're waiting on the structural engineer report. When we walked the building today, the, the part of the building that is the tower that has the residents in it appears to be no different than it was fifty years ago. It looks structurally fine. I am not a structural engineer and I'm not about to take on the responsibility and have another surfside happen in, here in Springfield. That said, surfside, different types of soil, different types of foundation. Springfield, Illinois, we're clay, we're, we've got a rocky foundation. Not that that doesn't mean that, you know, a collapse couldn't have happened, but a structural engineer needs to make that determination and not building and zoning or not the fire department. So we will wait on their report in the interim. We, we did placard the parking garage so that there's no vibrations and no, nobody gets hurt by additional falling concrete.
I got multiple pictures of the green tags, so I know you did it today. The other concern I have that I've been asking, maybe Mayor, you can help me with this. So we have, like I just said, Ms. Mimi, who's ninety-five years old. You have some people who still drive. Is there any way, they asked me this, is there any way that it could be some of the street parking allotted for them to use that has, we put maybe bags or a color bag on it for them to use?
Yeah, a couple of questions. How long have we known about the elevators and how many have been down? Because I think we had the same issue with, the originally building was a corporation council, where they were essentially moved to Myers Building. I mean, so, you know, we were talking about outgoing in the building since two thousand and six. We have residents there. Just said it's been going on for two and a half years. I mean, that's a big issue. The first time it was brought to my level was just last week. And so that's a problem. So that's what, how safe are the elevators? And if they ordered parts, have we seen the invoices where they actually, that's what we should be doing is checking and verifying.
Yeah. So, so the elevators issue has, has been going on for some time. However, they are required to have one elevator that is, is working. They do have three. The state, OSFM regulates the elevators. That inspector was there, I believe, in November as well. Did you meet him that day?
I did not meet him that day, but we had a meeting where I asked for the city to come out to assist.
He also, you know, one elevator was close in addition to the one that has constantly been working. So one elevator has been constantly working and as with most elevators.
So what, from a fire safety standpoint, I mean, I don't know how many residents there are.
Hundred and...
Hundred and sixty.
So what is the safe amount of elevators to be working to vacate a hundred and sixty individuals?
Well, so if there's, so from the standpoint of fire safety or from the code that we follow, if there's a fire, the residents are actually supposed to vacate through the stairs.
Sixteen flights.
That's unfortunate. That's what the, what the code requires. So for us, we would love to have all three because our fire individuals would use those to go up and evacuate. And a building like that, the procedures would be, if the alarm goes off, because it is a concrete structure, the, the residents are supposed to shelter in place unless they're on the fire floor, in which case they would get out or, you know, via the stairs. And so they would go down a couple of levels and our firefighters would meet them at that level and work to safely evacuate them. So with it being a high-rise, there's, our procedures are, are different than a normal house where you immediately evacuate. They are supposed to have emergency plans where they tell the people, you know, shelter in place and await further instructions.
They haven't. They haven't.
So with regards to, if we had an emergency shutdown, corporation council, can we force the current owners to put the residents up over at the window?
I'm not, I'm not sure that the code directly addresses that kind of a situation, but just briefly on the issue with the elevators, that, those issues relate to fire code and state matters?
So the fire code is only that we, so what's required in the fire code is that there be a, for a high-rise, that there be one fire service elevator. The elevators themselves, requirements for egress falls under codes such as ADA. They require accessible means of egress, which is not something that the fire code enforces.
And, and it is my understanding that right now, the elevator issue is actually in court on a referral.
It, it is. I didn't want to bring that up, but they failed to show at the last hearing.
To address the, the problem with the elevator issue is that, my understanding is it's been very intermittent, according to the information that the fire department supplied. So they may have an elevator, a single elevator, perhaps two elevators working, but it's been intermittent, intermittent, meaning the one elevator that is working might be working for a period of time and then out for twenty-four hours and then working again. So it's been intermittent is what's been reported.
Corporation council, you have people sleeping downstairs because they can't get upstairs. You have people where they, they are not even allowing packages to go up. So you have a building that now has security issues because they have over forty-five boxes sitting right in the foyer area. This is getting ridiculous. And I'm sorry, and I do want to apologize, Mayor. I'm sorry for interrupting.
We were there today and I didn't see any boxes in the foyer.
Yeah, they've moved them. I have photos. I remember, I get called over there. And Mayor, I apologize, but I've been getting better at cc'ing you on a lot of emails, but I spoke to Director Bottom at a meeting publicly where the residence was at this meeting and they approached both of us and I asked them for help. So I know I've been sending constant emails out for nobody to inform you about this situation over there.
And when was the public meeting?
It was over at one of our churches, but it wasn't, it didn't have anything to do with Lincoln Towers, but because they knew that we were there, they approached us then.
And how long ago was that?
Over five or six months ago, and you haven't been informed.
Two years ago, two and a half years ago? This has been going on two and a half years? The living conditions?
Yes, yes. One elevator for about a year now. And like you said, intermittent. I mean, it may be down twenty-four hours, it may be down thirty-six, never two days of old.
Sir, the owners coming in, you said, corporation council or no?
Well, it was, it's my understanding that the fire department and the inspectors and everybody met with an out-of-town manager. I thought today is what I was told.
Correct. We've, so we've been only in contact with the building manager and the building manager has changed even through this, since November process, has changed a couple of times. Today, we met with a new person that they brought in. And as far as in court, because the elevators thing has gone through, through city legal to administrative court, that is supposed to be the owners, but again, no one, they failed to show.
Mayor, they only, the residents only get an answer when I send an email and I request to do a meeting. That's the only time the residents are informed about something. On Friday, it was stated that their key fob system was down and that's why the garage was closed.
Yeah, I guess what we need to get to, because of the situation, if fire safety's okay with the living arrangements, then fine. But if not, we need to take the corrective action and full force like tomorrow. And so whatever that is, we should go full throttle on it. I mean, that's, to me, I mean, just hearing it, sounds like a pretty dangerous situation. I mean, you know, having help us if something...
Happens.
Right, right.
So, and Horace Mann, they shouldn't be saddled with the parking. I mean, we have the, well, someone mentioned, we tore down the YMCA, former YMCA, or places closer, or put them on the streets, or talk to Karen Khan, Khan's catering right, right around there. I mean, there's places right around there that we'd be able to figure it out. So I think we need to get the owners on the phone like tomorrow and see what they're gonna do. And if not, we should go full force of law. Whatever we're able to do, we should do it because it's not acceptable. I mean, how many? Hundred and sixty people? One elevator? And I'd like to know the age, median age of the people living there.
Well, I just named the oldest one.
That creates an entirely different situation.
Eighty-five. We have several eighty-year-olds in that building and we are concerned about health issue because the fire department can't get up or down if that elevator is not running for an emergency. I've had a heart attack, many others in there have had all kind of heart attacks and we're quite concerned about our health too. The state fire marshal is the one that is taking the lead, I think, on a lot of that elevator issue. We keep being told there's some part that they don't have, but when they got it, the fire marshal came out and said, "No, you now get to put these cables in and we wait three, four months and then they come back and say, "No, the fire marshal said we can't run it because now we got these rollers or something in the doorway." I'm like, "Why the hell didn't they fix all of that in the first place?" You know, but they, you know, they don't want to spend on three elevators, just guessing, three million dollars.
Do you know if the housing, is it market rate housing or is this assisted housing where some people have certificate? No, certificate, certificates. So do any of the...
There's no safety in that building. Everybody there paying top dollar for top service and not getting it.
Because that sets another set of circumstances.
Most expensive place in Springfield if you're on this side, west side.
That's right. And Mayor, I have asked, Mr. Douglas will tell you, they have been wanting to come to city council since January and I have been sending emails and getting things worked on. And now they're just at a point where they're wanting to start coming in. The residents are asking, do we need to start showing up every week to get the attention that we need at this building? So I know my colleagues don't like when you, you bring people from the neighborhood to come and speak in front of us, but I don't know what else we can do now.
Well, we're gonna take immediate action. So if I would have this called two years ago, it'd been entirely different. We wouldn't be at this situation. So we'll figure out what we need to do. Yep.
We thank the fire department, the state fire marshal. We know it's owners, you know, who refuse. And I just quickly, when I moved in there eight years ago, there were like six people in the management unit. There was like two maintenance guys, three cleaners and another person. And now they got two maintenance guys and two cleaners and one management person who, as I said, all they can tell us is, "The owners don't want to talk to you." So I thank y'all for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you.
No one has signed up, sir.
Is there any other citizens out there that would like to address the council? Okay. Please, Alice, come on. That's Sean's friend.
You know, I may come up here every Tuesday and sit and listen. I think it's where we need to be to hear what you all do, okay? I don't appreciate what you said, that the people up here on this horseshoe do not like people from the neighborhood. You just heard a man that's fighting for his neighborhood, his house, and these people need to hear that. Every one of these citizens that voted for these people up here need to hear that, okay? They should have one, two, three, all kinds of people come up here and talk. Whether nothing gets done, at least they know that their people are thinking about them and want something done. So don't ever make a statement that nobody can come up here and we did, they did not want it, because I've been coming up here for twenty-eight years, lady, and I know this town, okay?
That's not what I said.
You said your...
I'm gonna be very clear.
Your colleagues, these are your colleagues.
Those are my constituents and I asked them to come here. So please don't misunderstand what I just said.
Well, then I'll retract my statement. I'm sorry. But I'm telling you, every one of these ladies, they're sitting out here or whatever, even the police officers have people come up and talk. And they need to do that because they voted for you. They all voted for you. Sorry, decento. I didn't mean to get mad, okay? I know you didn't, but you're the only one leaving in here, so I had to say something.
Joe's leaving?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. So here we are. But this is how I feel about it. I love coming up here. May not say everything what I boast to say because sometimes I don't want to talk the way I usually do in the streets, but you know, I know these people. I know the Horace Mann. I knew the guy that had the, made the buildings. I can't even think of his name now because you got me so mad. Anyway, I know what this city's like. I know. I know what it's like to not have a place to stay, that it's adequate to the seven hundred and eighty dollars that you pay or the thousand dollars that you pay. When you get this, you do. And Mayor, it's about time that you tell that owner to get off of his ass and do something. If not, you'll take it over. Goodbye.
Okay. So we'll adjourn to executive session now at this time.
No?
No, we don't got another. Oh, y'all don't want, what, motion to adjourn then? Sure move.
Second.
All right.
I know. I was just sitting there, minding my own business. Mind my own business.